Good evening, everyone. If everyone's ready, we'd like to get started with our second school board meeting for January 2020. If you'd all join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, would please note the role. I'd like to announce that we had an executive session prior to the meeting this evening to discuss litigation. And we'll move right into public comment. Do we have any requests for public comment?
We do not, sir.
We do not. And do we have any volunteers or anybody who's interested in addressing the board? No usual cast of characters out there?
Our people.
Our people. Our people. They're all our people.
Okay.
All right. And with that, we'll start with our report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Tonight, I just wanted to take the opportunity to start talking about, and we talked about this last year, about a website update. And our last website update was in 2012, and obviously, it's 2020, and we need to move ourselves forward. Some of the things that really are very, you know, are important to us, and important to the board because we've had these discussions, are a website that really works with a mobile app and that's ADA compliant, which you're going to hear more about that tonight because that's something on our horizon. And then, really, last but not least, a complete refresh and an update. So tonight, from Blackboard K-12, we have Caitlin Ford, who is going to give you a presentation. And what I ask you to do is just, you know, listen to her introduction and her thoughts tonight, and then there'll be time for questions at the end. So Caitlin, without further ado.
Thank you. First things first, flip over to a mock-up I did, just to talk about it a little bit. First thing I want to say is thank you so much for having me here today. I'm super excited to be working with the team from Pots Grove and very excited about, you know, really bringing a new unified communications solution for your parents and community to the community. So what I've done is I put together a little mock-up of a refresh of a site. This isn't the final site by any stretch of the imagination, but I wanted to give you an idea of how great modern design and websites are that are ADA compliant, are responsive. So one of the favorite things for everybody here in the room, when and if you guys go to the new website, you'll be able to actually access it from your mobile phones, which is very important for everybody in your community to be able to access your website, no matter the device that they're on, cellphone, tablet, computer, or your projectors we're looking at today, which is really nice. Before I really jump into it, in your packets tonight, I've included a separate black folder, which talks a little bit about each of the components that we'll talk about here in the next 10 to 15 minutes or so. On the left-hand side, you will see the whole Blackboard Community Engagement Suite, which will talk about a couple pieces of. And on the right-hand side is a kind of a typed up addendum, some of the pieces that I've been working with the Pots Grove team on. As Dr. Scher said, the websites, as well as a mobile app, and then a unified communications solution called our Blackboard Mass Notification. Those three products work together as our Blackboard Community Engagement Suite. So really, the idea is one unified communications platform for the district. What that allows administration to do is when they send out a message or anything to the district, it's kind of a one-stop shop out to your parents, but one message and everybody gets it at once versus having to go multiple places. Two big components of that, of course, are going to be the website. And the second big piece of that, I need to jump over to my computer here. Flip it around. Oh, no. I touched it. It's a mobile communications app, and we'll look at that here in just a second here. Mobile communication, and I'll just keep rolling through here. So a mobile communications app will be able to be downloaded from the Apple or the Google Play Store, depending on what device that you have, by the school district's name. So your parents can go out and download that and be able to get all the information kind of as a one-stop shop that can show you here on the screen. You can see some of the information here. So these two are not going to sync up right now in our demo environment, but in a perfect world, when this is all complete, your top stories are going to pull right from the website. The idea of the app is to aggregate all the areas of content your parents are going today into one place. With a little bit of an extra little element, parents will be able to pull in their students into the app. And I have a crack right on my phone in front of Lucas's name, of course. And be able to pull in student-specific information, again, really giving them that one-stop-shop, grades, upcoming assignments, missed assignments. They'll also be able to see notifications coming right to their device as a personalized message from the district, whether it's a two-hour delay, whether it's a snow day. We don't have any of those here in Pennsylvania. Could be some general communication around, maybe it's a playoff basketball game. Or it could be just a community event. Or it could be some specific messaging for that parent and student. Maybe bus two is delayed. Lucas isn't going to be home on time. Mom needs that information. Could be daily attendance. Right now, they get a phone call home for attendance. You're actually going to get a phone call and a push notification right to their device, and you're going to meet their needs kind of right where they're at. Margaret's reports, mid-term grades, the whole nine yards can be pushed right to the parents. This is Pennsylvania, and we love our sports, right? The other great asset to the app is we can pull the sports scores right into here, again, as a one-stop-shop. Parents can see what is going on in district, what time the games are, what the scores were, and get that recap of what's happening, syncing into a lot of the systems that you're using today in district. You see the tip line on here. Pennsylvania, we don't use this tip line, and we use state-to-state, so we're going to integrate right with these solutions that you're using, so parents can still come in and submit those tips along with your students. Some of the other super handy features in here, I know we have lots of parents in the room, first thing sometimes a child asks when they walk in the doors, what's for lunch tomorrow? Am I packing, or am I going to buy lunch? Very easily can see lunch menus in here for each building, you can do lunch and breakfast, the whole nine yards. Parents can actually come in here and pay their lunch bill, as you can see that cafeteria icon in the right-hand corner, help eliminate some of that cafeteria debt as well in districts. Again, one-stop-shop for parents. And this app will be fully customized and be able to put all the links in there that you want to for your particular district. I have a lot of districts, if you look at Bredning School District. They have notifications in here. They, of course, have information about the guidance center and working papers for their high school students, transcripts, and on and on, a ton of information. Really is a one-stop-shop for parents. So, and again, you can see across the top, this is completely district branded for Bredning School District, as yours will be district branded for Pots Grove. Ironically, similar colors. Any questions about the app before we jump backwards to the website?
You were saying about you can be pulling data. Are we actually, somebody in the Pots Grove staff entering the individual scores, or are you pulling it as part of the service?
So we will work with, is it big teams? Is it big teams that have it for sports? We'll work with big teams, and once this integration's set up, it's going to keep pulling.
So what sort of daily maintenance from the school and will have to be required?
So it'll be exactly what's being done today by the athletic director and big teams.
I'm sorry, not just in sports, I mean, in general, you know, for school closings and things like that, two-hour delay, bus delays. There's anything, that's all from the staff to upload that, and one location gets pushed to there and then pushed out to the parents? Or is that something that you're pulling from, you know, a database that you're asking the staff to add to?
So it's actually going to be a little bit of enhancement, an enhancement from what the staff and faculty's doing today. So today, you utilize our Blackboard Connect product, which was really designed and built. It's a simple system for hospitals and higher ed and government. Leave the mass certification system as an enhancement to that that actually saves them time. Right now, they're going to seven, eight places to push out that message. They'll be able to push phone, email, text, Facebook, Twitter, and write to the website all in one fell swoop moving forward. So that's going to save time. Great question. Yes.
Will the app be available to people who do not have kids in school, who have access to athletic information, or whether...
Absolutely. So the reason we call this our Community Engagement Portfolio of Products is it is available for the entire community. So whether you're a parent in district, whether you're a grandparent that lives in South Florida, you'll still be able to download the Pots Grove app for a question and get that information. You can also kind of keep tabs. So parents will not be able to log into the app, excuse me, community members and grandparents and such will not be able to log into the app and see student-specific information. So no grades, they won't be able to see attendance, things like that, but you'll have all the other icons available to you. Great question.
Currently, we use PowerSchool and Schoology. Are these basically just going to be links to those sites, and then the same thing for, apparently, we use for paying for lunches and such? But, or is it, this might be a Tony question, or are we going to be getting rid of those to use just this, or...
It's going to be like a dashboard to those.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Direct integration.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others?
My only question is, what's our timeline of the windows?
So timeline with the website for, I'll put that back to Dr. Scher.
We did our work. We talked as a district team, we talked to Blackboard. We wanted to bring Blackboard in tonight to have this, you know, so the board has a chance to ask questions, and then we were going to come back with recommendations. We'd like to move it forward.
What's the additional cost?
I don't think we're, we have that at this point, additional cost?
The total cost, because we're absorbing it to some other...
Yeah, I believe it's about, is it 24, 24 something, I believe?
Not additional, but total.
But that means we absorb something like the school messenger, but then we would not pay for school messenger because it would be integrated into this one.
I mean, right now, it's not friendly at all.
No, we do have that broken down, correct?
Yes.
But, and again, I want to do, and you know, I wanted to stage this out, you know, this was the first step. We do have that to follow up. I don't want to get too sid, I don't, I mean...
I mean, great, it's fantastic. Right now, it takes to sign us up, but if someone tells you, well, it's not a million dollars, you can say, well, I'm not signing up anymore. So to me, the price is the biggest determining factor.
But I wanted to get your blessing, I wanted you to see the product. I wanted you to say, hey, yeah, we want to know more, and then we'll get that, we'll get that pricing to you, really, for the next, it depends on how fast you want to move. We can have it to you in this week as far as information, and then we can, we can look at it for the first meeting in February or the second meeting in February. But we definitely, it is a goal of ours to get this off the ground. It definitely is.
That's tied in.
Yeah, and it's a workable number. I mean, it's not, it's, we've taken all the considerations about what we're paying with other products, how will this be absorbed in that, the startup cost, and the effect on the budget going forward. We did think about all those pieces. We just didn't want to give you too much of one, I didn't want to distract from this meeting and the presentation.
Is Redding the only district around our area that has this?
No, we have 214 districts in Pennsylvania.
In our area?
214 in Pennsylvania? Yes. That's almost, yeah, we're based right in State College as well. So we have a huge, in the area, I have to go on the outside.
I could probably just go on the app and the iOS and just put up districts, and one of them's going to come up.
And what I can do is get you a full, full, full list. Upper Parkview is one. Try and make Bethlehem just went live with the Brandy site, and we're a little bit out. What I can do is I can pull up full lists. Once I get, I'm actually charging Atlantic City for a conference tonight. Once I get down to Atlantic City, I can pull up full list of districts. I should have been prepared with that. Great question.
So it's 214 districts with this level of Blackboard, not just the, like, the level of the event now. 214 are doing what you're proposing here.
So we have 214 total districts in Pennsylvania. I think the numbers 180 have more than one product, so website, Android mobile app, Android mass certification.
Oh, because it's the same website.
So we have three, three core components to our business that make the community engagement bundle. Some districts, depending on where they are with their IU, will use an IDU service, and that's a large chunk of luxury of payment for notification. So what I wanted to do is give you a quick glimpse of the website and show you some of the enhancements from the current site that you have today. Biggest one's going to be responsiveness. Anybody can type this web address in their phone. It's going to pull up fully mobile responsive, and I can show you here. Don't mind my messy desktop. But if I take this down to a tablet view and then to a full cellphone, no matter what device I'm on, I can still access all of the information, again, no matter what device I'm on. Plays huge into accessibility and making sure that we're meeting our parents and families no matter where they're at, no matter what device they're using. Another great enhancement you're going to see is this high contrast toggle, which is something you don't necessarily think about. For anybody that's coming to your site that may be colorblind, and may be dyslexic, they may just have a really hard time seeing. They can easily flip the site from full color to black and white to really, and sometimes we just have tired eyes to make it easy to see what's on the side view. Little bit of enhancement of the menu, so you can see if anybody's been on your website recently. Just some additional design elements, look and flair. For those of you that are social media users, we want to make sure, again, our parents and our families can access our information that we're putting out from the district as many ways as possible, right? So we have all of the social media icons available to you on the left-hand side. If you choose not to use, say Vimeo or Peachtree, or some of the other ones that are most popular in the schools in Pennsylvania, we would just turn those off and wouldn't have to turn those on. Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube are obviously going to be the most popular. Again, when you talk about making content as easy as possible to find, global icons are one of the easiest ways to do that. Now, on a full-size desktop, these would be in one or two rows. The projector's kind of got some between a little bit. You can see all, again, all the information that your parents are looking for, kind of that one-stop-shop of those easy, applicable icons are there, and they'll take you out to those sources, whether it's PowerSchool, Schoology, on and on. And then, again, I just did a little bit of a mock-up here, showing what it would look like with some news and headlines. It's a little bit different from what you're doing to you, a little bit of enhancement. On down, we integrated the Facebook page right in there, some announcements, some highlights, through the calendar in there. You guys have Apple Distinguished School, which is incredible, through that article in there. And just on down, give you a glimpse of what the site could look like in the future. Easy to find information. You'll now see there's a Google app integration, one of my favorite features of our sites, the new ones. Reason being is if you do have a playoff game, you're a parent of a neighboring district, you can click right on that map, it'll pull up Google Maps for you right on your phone. Something you don't necessarily think about, but it's just makes it look easier. Some of the other enhancements I wanted to talk to you tonight, which I don't have built into the demo site, it's a live site, piece only, is our ally for accessibility. And really, what that's going to allow your users, is anybody coming to the site will be able to pull, I feel that's in behind you, be able to pull documents in alternative formats. Again, we talk about accessibility. They can pull that in a beeline reader format, going to move dyslexia, it's going to change those lines into different colors to make it easier to pull. Electronic Braille, anybody using a screen reader, they'll be able to pull any uploaded documents on the website in whatever format makes the most sense for them and their ability or disability, which is huge.
How about translation to different languages?
You're taking the words out of my mouth, so...
Does translate over?
Yep, read, so two pieces I want to note here. We have the website translator built in, which is a Google Frame translator, so that'll translate the information on the website.
How much is it?
With the enhancement to what Community Manager, what this product is called, there'll actually be a translator in there that'll allow you to translate PDFs, Word docs, PowerPoints, and any external document that you upload to Web Community Manager, which is the name of the, official name of the website. Great question. Kind of a thousand-foot overview of what we've done, what I've done here for the demo site. Any questions about the possibilities with the website? And any questions overall, anything you'd like to add? You guys are quite much. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Enjoyed coming into the meeting, everybody. Thank you. Thank you.
As Caitlin packs up, I just wanted to really thank our district-level team, Dr. Ziegler, Dr. Ramich, Gary Dorenzo, Tony Bicker, Lori Bicker, Joanne Crosby. You know, Dr. Hare and I sat in on it, but it's something that, as a district, we've talked about ourselves for the last two years, and I know it's been on the board's radar. And I think when it comes to our communications and our communication goals within the district, I think this is our logical next step. So what we will do, we do have the cost pieces put together. We'll just finalize those pieces and get it out to you. And I would probably just refer to the board, if you want to have another discussion piece about that in February, or would you like the write-up sent out and move it forward from there with an action item in February? We've been working on this since, since the fall, so another month for us is not, it's not hurting us, you know? I'd rather have it, I'd rather have it talked out at the table if anybody has any concerns, but we'll, we can do that. We've done that before, if you want to continue with that process.
I think if we, if we send it to everybody, then we're already changing those. I think we're pretty much turning it down.
We've been asking for this stuff for a while, so...
We still need to see numbers.
Right.
No, I...
I know, it ties into the budget.
Yeah, okay. So what we'll do is, we'll work this week in getting that out to you as a separate document. We won't, we won't convoluted with anything else besides you. So we'll send the website-specific information out to you, and then we'll, we'll look for feedback and then look to get this on the first meeting in February. So thank, thank you for that support. We appreciate it. The next, the next thing I wanted to talk about was...
I just wanted to point out, so we'll be seeing the numbers, and then for the next board meeting in February, the numbers will be part of the agenda that will come out on the Monday morning before the, the board meeting, so that'll be out there, so everybody will see what the number is. And we heard an order of magnitude number that was discussed back and forward. We kind of know what that number's going to be, and that'll be massaged through, and we'll hear that, and so we'll discuss that, so folks will see that number prior to the meeting, right?
Correct.
So we'll have that, and we'll know what that is. So we kind of know where we're going on that, right? Everybody's comfortable with that? Good. I'm sorry. Please, go ahead.
Thank you for the clarification. The next thing I just wanted to discuss with you, we've talked about this, it's been a couple years when I went back on my notes, but several board members just wanted to have us review the conference request process and framework. So I had an opportunity to sit with Mr. Boris and go over this, this step-by-step process. So it's two pages. Basically, you know, we have a request piece that we ask for, you know, demographic information, goal alignment, how we're going to share it, and then it moves to board approval. As you can see, if it's, if it's more than $100, then we bring it, we bring it to the board. This gets uploaded to board docs. We include all the information on the conference request, and then we move that to the conference attendance and participation. We have any paperwork, any travel or travel expenses. It gets basically balanced out at that point on the conference feedback form. And then, at that point, we share out amongst our buildings, teachers, administrators, to their staffs, et cetera. So I just wanted to give everybody an opportunity to review the process again with a diagram and also with definitions. And, you know, you know, like I said, Daniel and I, I've really talked about it. He had an opportunity to put it into words for you. So I just wanted to know if you have any questions. We'll be happy to answer them tonight.
I had one quick question. In regards, we always see on, like, on action items, education, on the seven that we have tonight, we always see a price, right? But then some of them will say substitute, substitute not required, substitute required, right? Does the price include the substitute?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, we, I got a couple requests. We wanted to share that with you. So, Mr. Lindgren, if it's okay, we'll move on to personnel?
Why, please?
Okay. Can I make a motion to combine 5.1 to 5.4?
Second.
We have a motion to combine items 5.1, 5.4, all the personnel items, and motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions on 5.1, 2.5, 4? No. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, very good.
Moving on to 5.5, the support staff appointment. We're asking the board to approve the support staff appointment as submitted.
We have a motion and a second on item 5.5, support staff appointment. Does anybody have any questions on item 5.5? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say no.
No.
Very good.
Yep, yes, sir. Moving on to action items for business, 6.1, middle school auditorium lighting upgrades. We're asking the board to authorize administrations to contract with Starlight Autovisual Lighting Solutions for the upgrade of the middle school auditorium lighting system in the amount of $405,454 as presented.
We have a motion and a second on this item, and as you can see there, it was, we approved 405, and the quote is actually 405, so that's good. Happy for that. Thank you. Are there any questions on this? Did you have your friend? That being the case, if there be no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to 6.2, theatrical rigging system upgrade project. We're asking the board to approve the rigging project system as presented.
We have a motion and a second. All of the different reports were attached for everybody to take a look at, so are there any questions or concern, anything? Please.
Just, I was just curious what prompted a theatrical rigging security check? Didn't it take one of those things where every five years, something happens, and you do this, or did something fall on somebody, or hoping not?
It was through my investigation, through our record-keeping here, that, in talking to our staff, we haven't had one done in over 10 years. So it was, every two years, you should get it, get them done. So I wanted to, a little bit behind, so we'll be fine after we do this here.
That's just crazy.
Mm-hmm, no problem.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did we get a motion and a second?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Are there any other questions on this? No. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection, then.
6.3, human resource... 6.3, human resource software. We're asking the board to authorize administrations to contract with frontline education for human resource software as presented.
We have a motion from Mrs. Graham and a second from Mr. Leach. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Comment and a question. I'm concerned with committing to something now that's going to affect next year's budget without having looked at and approved the whole budget. I don't... Thoughts from others or Dr. Harney on that?
In discussions, this is a time-sensitive piece that I've relayed to the board previously in another communication. I think the fact that it does add to next year's budget just adds to our process as anything that we're doing tonight, or any... A lot of these are going to be add-ons to next year's budget. It's really part of our job, then, as an administration, to make that work within the budget restraints that we have. So, I mean, I don't see this as something that would make or break the budget, or something that we would say at the end, "We just don't need that this year. Let's take that one away." I think this is something that is needed now, and regardless of how it affects things going forward, it's our responsibility to make that work within the budget next year is really how I would look at that. This recommendation just comes at a time where I think it's best not to delay something like this, to get this department, I think, where it needs to be for the future. And how it affects next year's budget, we're going to just have to work with our team to make sure that it does. I don't know how else to frame that.
Have any of the numbers changed that we're looking at now compared to what you had originally emailed out, or are they the same?
Yes, there's some reduction in these numbers. These are the specific numbers that I received. After we went back and forth a couple of times, this is the number, that little bit less than I originally sent out.
Just for the sake of discussion, very familiar with HR softwares, but for the sake of discussion, would you mind just kind of highlighting what this will do for the staff and why we're making the move?
That's a good question, and I believe in a communication you addressed something about another product. This is, frontline is purely education. There's no other business applications for it. They are strictly in the K-12 space. So what they do is a unified product. So we have, all of our products now would be through them, which has its advantages and also concerns, obviously, when you have everything in one bucket. But the thing is that they all talk to each other. So right now, we use, our time and attendance is our Aesop, and I'm missing one other. We had three systems already by frontline.
Oasis.
Oasis. So what this is going to do is take us from the hire to the onboarding to management of the records of that employee, and then packaging all of our employees through the system, so we can use it to monitor clearances, we can use it to push out information that we want signed off on annually, such as new policies or policies that we want read every year. It's going to be a system where it's really going to unify the whole product. And right now, from our onboarding, from our... We do have a product that collects our applications, allows us to review them, but then after that, it's all paper. And then we are then working through the process, then re-uploading that individual's information in several different places. This will take them from the application stage to onboarding to an employee. So it's a unified system, and we'll really modernize what we're doing right now.
And a big time saver.
Very big time, yeah, absolutely. The amount of time that Debbie Brolas spends with each and every employee will be cut quite a bit.
Excellent.
Along with her to do the many other things that she does.
Thank you. She's the best.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay. Are there any other questions on this? Okay. So we have a motion and a second on this. Did you have anything else, Ms. Parker, on this? No? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, so ordered without objection. Next, we move to registration software.
Registration software, 6.4. We're asking the board to authorize administrations to license school forms, registration software from Phoenix Learning Systems as presented.
I'm sorry, I didn't... I got Mrs. Graham, but I didn't... Was it his bill? Oh, no. Mr. Lappick, then. Mr. Lappick gets the second over there. Mr. Lappick. There goes Jim. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on this one?
Yeah, I had two quick questions on this one. We have two things. One, will this be able to go into that new system we saw as something easy for parents to go on there?
It's part of, it will be tied, excuse me, tied into Power School. So assuming Power School links, this will link.
Second question is, it says it includes an 18-month software licensing. The only thing I had a question about is if we vote for it today, and I'm going to read for a yes, I don't necessarily want it to start, I don't think, today, because the 18 months, probably from April to October, is probably when you get your most registrations, because people moving and such. Wouldn't we want to make sure we schedule that 18 months exactly?
The reason we did 18 months was to spread the cost out over two budget cycles. So what we want to do is, we want to get it in place for the upcoming kindergarten registration process, if at all possible, and then it'll go from that point on.
Aren't we, in essence, committing ourselves to two years if we have a contract for 18 months, just as a practical nature? You know, you're not going to do the, run this thing for half a year and then drop it.
Right. Well, you're committing yourself to $10,000 a year forever, and because you're buying it for 18 months, you're paying $17,000.
Okay.
So... Roughly.
Can I just ask something real quick? So, the bottom here, it says, "This system appears to be easier to use and is completely customizable to our needs." Does that mean we haven't seen this system in, at work?
We haven't implemented it yet, so we won't know for certain. We viewed demos of other districts' operations, and it is clear and concise. What we... Probably the easiest way to get to it is to tell you some of the shortcomings in our old system. Probably the biggest thing that bothered me about our old system is, it's a voluminous process to go through a lot of questions, and if you miss a question or you do not answer it properly, it doesn't go through, and it sends you back to the beginning, and you have to go hunt for your mistake, what you missed. And if you miss multiple things, after you submit that correction for that first one, it takes you back to the top, and then you have to keep looking for your next mistake. So we've seen a lot of frustration from parents who, especially ones who are not quite as savvy on computers as, you know, a lot of the younger parents are. They really struggle with it, or if they have a language issue. This is well-organized. You can't leave a page, a series of questions, until it's answered, and it takes you back to the question you missed, instead of going all the way back to the beginning. So those are some of the functional improvements that are made by this software. It also, this is designed by a company we use that does our custom programming for Power School. So a lot of the detail that currently we have housed offline will be able to be housed in Power School at the end of the, a lot of the student information now, so.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, so ordered without objection.
Moving on to CrowdStrike Security Software, 6.5. We're asking the board to authorize administrations to license CrowdStrike Security Software as presented.
Okay, motion and a second from Mrs. Grimm and Mr. Leach. Any questions on this one?
Just a basic one, but is there any concern, if we're implementing CrowdStrike, is there going to be any concern with Blackboard's extended system that we're looking at purchasing? I imagine they will tell us by, I don't know if they brought it yet or not.
There should be no issues with that.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
6.6 is the Amplified IT Support. We're asking the board to authorize administrations to contract with Amplified IT for a block of support hours in the amount of $2,250 as presented.
Motion and a second, again, from Mrs. Grimm and Mr. Leach. Are there any questions on this?
Yes. It says, yeah, it says a block of time, five seconds, 10 days, is there... Sorry, I meant to, you know, ask a thing of it, so.
But I have to look at the quote, but I believe it's approximately 15 to 20 hours, which we believe will be sufficient for this.
Are there any other questions? Yeah, no? No? Okay. Hearing and seeing no other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 6.7 and 6.8. It's submitted.
Motion and a second on 6.7 and 6.8, settlement agreements. Are there any questions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, or saying aye.
Aye.
Add the other letters, too, please. All those opposed, say n, or no? So ordered without objection.
Moving on to action items for education, number seven.
I'd like to combine 7.1 to 7.3.
Very good. We have a motion and a second on 7.1 to 7.3. Are there any questions on those conferences? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Very good.
Moving on to conference attendance for PDE Annual Conference, 7.4. We're asking the board to approve the conference's attendance item as submitted.
We have a motion and a second on 7.4. Do we have any questions on 7.4? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to conference attendance, 7.5. We're asking the board to approve the conference attendance as submitted.
Are there any questions? If not, all those in...
Yeah, yeah. So these two conferences, is this like a part-one, part-two conference? They seem very similar.
It has both, it has to do with having devices in your classroom. One of them is focused more on the assessment and how you provide feedback to students. The other one is about student choice and creating environments within that setting. Both part of a series.
Okay. If there are no other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to conference attendance, 7.6.
Yeah, it says almost the same.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking above. Thank you.
No, that wasn't the question.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I was, I see PDE, my eyes just go like, you know, PDE again. Right. No problem.
Isn't that a good thing?
It is a great, it's a great thing.
Isn't that a good thing?
Except not in the middle of the night. It's not a good thing.
Stop, stop.
We're asking the board to approve the conference attendance as submitted.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on this? No questions. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, so ordered without objection.
We move forward with committee items. We're asking the report of the Facilities and Ops Committee that was held on January 14th.
Well, we've already passed all of those, so that's a little bit OBE on this one. So, yeah, at our last meeting, we went over basically all the things we just approved and reported those out, so I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this. It was the software that we talked about and approved for this meeting, and the theatrical rigging, which we had talked about before. The only other thing that we got was the 10-year capital project, projects, and did that go out to everybody, that list of projects?
Yes.
That did go out to everybody. So I would ask everybody to take a look at that listing of projects, so we can prioritize that. And the next meeting, our next meeting is February 11th, to talk about, so if people can kind of give me some feedback on their ideas on prioritizing those projects, so we can have some discussion. And of course, February, what's coming up in February?
Budget.
Budget. Budget hearings start in February, and I know everybody's going to be wanting to join the Facilities Committee as we start hearing our budget plans. It's when our attendance goes up, everybody comes, it's a big party. Can't wait to see you all there. All get to hear what our plans are for next year. I know, I'll be there. So that's what we did at our Facilities Committee, so moving on to the CIT.
Can I have a question for that? So in regards to the 10-year plan, the name is blanking me, but can we also get with that 10-year plan from the Business Department and how our capital, that's it, capital fund is going to, what the needs will be, and just how that's going to work over the next 10 years in comparison to the 10-year plan?
We'll have to have enough money to pay for the projects on the capital funding. Okay. We want them to match as much as possible. Sure.
I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Custer for the report out on Curriculum Integration and Technology Committee.
Okay, so we had our, we had our meeting last Tuesday night. We actually had a board, extra board member there, Tina, and we even had a parent, so that was really cool. So we started out with speaking about the possible introduction and replacement of the laptops at the high school with the iPads, and we had a fairly lengthy discussion about it. Quite a few questions were asked, different scenarios were presented, such as, you know, how do you, how are the kids going to type on it? What about the, the lack of, what do you call it, verticalness of an iPad compared to a laptop? No decisions were made. We're still in discussion. We still want to see more information before any kind of decision is made. So if you guys have any questions about that, if you can let me finish, and then we could go back to it. go back to it, that would be great. We talked about the E-rate, which Tony Bickert explained to us is basically money that is, it's free money that we get from the state, and we can use it to pay for certain things in technology, and we're going to use it to pay for part of the switches that we approved. We then discussed the two courses that we had brought up at the previous meeting, the two possibly new courses, the first one being finance, and that would be in the high school. We discussed possibly making that mandatory. And we were just given the little bit of information about it, and then we're going to be talking to different districts and stuff and see how they handle it. We did get quite a large, Mr. Leach had put out some, a question on social media, and we had a lot of feedback on that. Most parents were very pro finance course, so that's just good to know. We also discussed geography. And so Mr. Voorhees had collected lots of information from teachers starting in kindergarten all the way up to high school, about how they integrate geography into their lesson plans. And again, we didn't come to a decision or any kind of conclusion as to where we would go from there, but we're going to continue to follow through with that and just see if there's any improvements that can be made within that area. Next, we talked about the comprehensive plan, which we will have to start working on. And we have to have our final submission in by November 30th. So we will start having our committee meetings, and we have to start basically the planning stage, so that by, when is it? When do we meet as a full, when we get everybody together? When is that?
Backing up from the November 30th date that we have to have final submission to PDE, prior to that, we need to do a public presentation for the Board, that'll likely be in October. That needs to be followed by a 28-day review process, and all of that, of course, occurs before that final submission. So backing up from there, it puts you right about today, that we begin communicating with full committees, subcommittees, and the work moves forward from there.
And then when do we choose, like, when do we get together as a full, with the parents and the, you know, the, yeah, with the whole group? When does that happen?
That'll be, likely be starting in about a month, a month's time. So Dr. Harney and I are putting together that plan right now, as well as putting together the people that will be on the full committee. I had the opportunity to look at who was on the committee last time. Some of those people are no longer with the district, some of those parents are no longer in the district, so we're kind of refining that list, so that we can come back and put together a plan moving forward from there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
You just know the details of it a lot better than I do, so. We also, and we ended with, the Curriculum Committee had requested that we have some presentations surrounding the, and highlighting some of the new curriculum that has been introduced over the last couple of years, and how we would like to have that done. I personally would like to see it at full Board meetings, and it doesn't have to be anything long, just something showing basically taxpayers' money at work, and just, you know, and I know we see it when we go to the other schools and we get little presentations from, you know, from the kids, and that's great, but I'd like to, I don't, I mean, we didn't discuss exactly how it would be presented, but I would just like to sort of hear from the teachers and maybe the students or something, just to know that we done good. So, that was it.
Just one thing I wanted to add, actually, because I, I actually went out and I asked my kids, and then I had my kids asking some individuals in the fraternity, roommates, classmates and such like that about the whole iPad versus laptop, because that's obviously something we were asking. To my surprise, I actually was more on the why in the world do we even have MacBooks on the Apple side versus the world, and I even said in the meeting, I said, "The world is a Windows world." It's, actually, I guess, I'm a little bit on the offside here. It seems like it's a 50-50, because according to them and their friends and their fraternity and, it's like a cloud world. Everything's on the cloud now. So they generally, doesn't matter to them whether they're using an Apple product or a Windows product, it's all via online. They did say that every single kid they know, and every single kid that I talked to in other areas, parents and such, every one of them had the laptop. They said, "No one even has desktops anymore, and no one uses the iPads," they said. They said, "Those are for, you know, kids." So every single one of them uses a laptop in general, and I even asked them about that. I said, "Hey, look, if you had just used your iPad straight through, would you have an issue?" And they all said, "Yeah, I'd have a major issue," because when I go into class, everybody's expecting me to be able to know exactly how to use a laptop already. So I thought that was a little interesting, but I did, I was surprised to see that half the kids use Apple and half the kids use Windows, so I thought that was interesting.
In regards to finance, don't we already offer a personal finance class in the high school?
We do, but it's not mandatory. It's an elective, it's a half-credit elective. We also offer a math course, full credit, that does cover quite a bit of personal finance. Our objective and our question was, can we offer, can we make it mandatory? Because while it's great for those kids who take it as an elective, a lot of times, unfortunately, it's the kids who don't take it who need it the most, the ones who don't even realize how important it is, that need it. You know, in my, in my family, it was, well, Brady took all, took four years of business, but with my daughter, I was like, "You're taking personal finance. I don't care what you say, you're taking." But that doesn't happen in every household.
And isn't the state, I think, starting next year, going to, aren't we going to be mandated to allow personal finance in place of, I think, social studies?
To clarify that, you can, the state in the last action, last session, approved giving one, up to one credit of credit for personal finance under a variety of different topics. Now, it's not mandatory, and I would guess that there will be further discussion on this, but I don't think it's likely to become mandatory, just because what I call the law of conservation of information, the more stuff you put in, something's got to come out. So I don't think it's likely to be mandatory, but, you know, who knows predicting what Harrisburg's going to do?
Bill, if I remember correctly, it was five classes, 156 students were on the business side and handled by our business teachers, and two classes of 58 students on the math side. The math class was much more detailed, obviously, you would think, you know, being a math class. It was the, and that one had all the different things, like college preparateness, loans and everything. The business side had more basic information, which probably why the difference in credits and such like that. If I also remember correctly, at the bottom, they asked the teachers, recommendations and stuff, and two of all of them pretty much said that they would actually recommend that all students take some type of finance class. The question's going to be whether or not we want it as a mandatory, and how would we classify it? You couldn't fit a whole credit, it would cost too much money, it would have to be a half-credit at highest.
I don't see the need for it to be a full credit. You know, I don't, I mean, yeah, I mean, if you want to dive really deep and start talking about, you know, stocks, bonds, commodities, futures, stuff like that, but right over my head with most of that stuff. But, you know, just the basics is so important, and so many kids don't get it. They just don't get it.
We're going to be, we're going to be finalizing a lot of those questions that the committee asked at this month's meeting, along those pieces, so. We'll get a flavor for personal finance in the area and find out what other people are doing. We're also going to look, talk about ways to integrate it, if we choose to integrate it or not, and that, of course, if we do choose to make it a graduation requirement, it's going to have to come back to policy as well. So there's a couple steps yet to go, you know, this, in this, the next six months or so, or at least before the end of the school year, so. I'm hoping the next two months, we'll have a clearer picture of what that, what that will be, and we'll be able to talk more about it at this table.
Very good. New business?
Yep.
New business?
I've been, a while back, I talked about the breakdown between PSBA and the local school district, so I've been in contact with them and have been very active with them, so now they're giving me updates on things to update our school board on what they're doing. So I have three items, and the press release was out yesterday. One is mental health initiatives. Governor Wolf announced a mental health initiative that would impact school districts. In addition, a report of state suicide prevention task force included recommendations to address mental health issues in schools, which again, is really nice that the PSBA is working with the government to hear what we're saying needs to be done. 2020, 2021 state budget, the governor will present the state budget on February 4th. PSBA will provide extensive coverage of the budget proposal as it impacts our education. So that's actually better, because remember, they don't, sometimes they didn't do that until the fall, past the budget. And then last, that they're working hard on is cyber education testimony. PSBA presented testimony to the House Education Committee, raising concerns with House Bill 1897 that requires all school districts to offer three full-time cyber education programs. Current cyber charters would seize operations and act as third-party vendors. So these are like the three topics that they just came up with, so when more information comes out, I'll be able to present more and forward it to you. But right now, these are like the three that were just released yesterday.
Let me ask a question on that. That actually came up at the meeting we were at with the Congressman, in the regards, that was a bill that was introduced that, and I don't know if you heard about it, Dave, in regards to the state budget mandatory being passed by a certain date, or us moving our dates until the state passes a budget. That's what was said.
There was a discussion, I haven't heard that it passed, or it's gotten any traction, and they just, as a result, anything you heard that took place before December is gone. It has to start all over again, now they were back in January. So, including the cyber, cyber charter reform laws, everything has to start from ground zero and start over again now, so.
Yeah, that was always the beef that we always had, is like, how could they mandate us to pass a budget when they can't even pass their budget? You know, like, how do we know what monies we're getting when they don't have to pass it, but it's mandatory for us?
I have a few things, but I think they're short. First, high school attendance. A couple issues there, and I'm wondering if there's something that can be done. I've experienced and I've heard from, repeatedly from other parents, when a student is absent, parents don't get the call till at least six, and usually after that. And that's a concern to me for, especially because of safety. If something, you know, worst-case scenario happened, and the parent would know it all day long and into the evening. And also in regards to attendance, there seems to be a lack of communication, where students are marked absent that are, you know, taking some sort of standardized test and this kind, it just seems to me with the technology we have, we can and we should do better with attendance. So I would request, if there's, unless there's objection, that that be looked into and that we hear either why it can't be better, or how it can be and will be improved. Any, before we go on, any thoughts?
I mean, we, obviously, we can find out information about the attendance calls, that piece, that's, that's, that's an informational piece. I guess for us, to best answers to your question, you know, specific, specifics would help, would help answer, because, so a general high school to call on what time that goes out, we can find that, that robo piece out, or the email piece that goes out. The next piece about, is a little bit more subj, like, I'm just trying to...
I can be more specific. I don't know all the examples out there, I just know a couple examples. When kids are, go off grounds first period, I don't know if this happens with Western Tech, but it happens with ROTC, that attendance isn't always known, because, you know, they're going to a different school, so I don't know the specifics as far as when they, I don't, I don't want to give the answer how to fix it, but attendance isn't always accurate for kids leaving for ROTC programs.
Okay, so that's, that's one thing to look at.
That's more specific, yeah.
Okay.
As far as the robo-call, I know I'd asked Dr. Ziggler about that last year, and I don't know if he's here or not, but. It said about, I think it dealt with Western Center, just the timing, because they may not be aware if the children were at the Western Center yet, and that's why the call came out later for high schools of middle school.
I have to agree, though, I always thought that was ridiculous. Why get a call at 6:00 at night? Why then, number one, if your kid did skip school, well, it's a little late, you know? And two, if your kid, if you, if your kid is missing, well, yeah, it's a little late.
We'll look into that, yeah.
A request for future information, no, I don't expect an answer tonight, certainly, or anything rushed, but kind of an offshoot to something Mrs. Custer was saying, in regards to our Alt Ed program, though. It would be nice to get a report at some point, a real assessment of the program. Is it working, you know, what are the strengths, where can it be improved? And I'm especially interested in knowing how, what the curriculum is used there, and how it ties into our curriculum, and how are students prepared? You know, how are they kept up, I guess, is the best way to say it. So when they return to the classroom, they're not more behind, and which oftentimes will create more behavior issues.
And what does that do for us? I mean, what, what is the nature of the request? What is the problem we're trying to solve? What is, what is that?
Well, I don't know that there's, there is a problem, but I think it's, it is part of our school program, and we hear and want to hear and so forth, and do hear about other pieces of the education program, but it would be nice to hear how that program's doing. And like I said, especially the transitioning piece in the curriculum, I mean, I'm sure there's other pieces, but I've heard concerns, but it just raises questions. You know, yeah, we don't hear a lot, and it's not a criticism in any way, shape or form, but at some, and that's why I say there's no rush, but at some point, it'd be nice, it is part of our program. We hear about other departments and other facets of the school. I'd be interested in hearing, unless the majority doesn't want to hear, in that important piece of our program.
Anytime we ask the Administration to create a presentation, they're creating a presentation, that means they're not doing other assigned tasks. There is a certain amount of time that they're spending on this task that they're not doing other tasks. There's no problem with this if this is, if this is something we want, we, the Board, want them to do. What I'm looking for is a little bit more of an idea of what it is we're asking for, and, I mean, is it just a presentation on what is the program, how many kids are in it, and, and that sort of thing, so like a 10-minute, 10-minute prep time brief, or something you want someone to spend 40 hours on? What, what is it you're looking for?
What, what, what is it you're looking for?
I guess the easiest way to summarize is, is our program successful? Is there more? I, I just think it's always good to do, which we do with different programs and which we should do and continue to do, to periodically or whatever, like we do with the general curriculum every few years, look at, you know, math and then science and whatever the next year, for that to be part of, I'm not saying that review, but part of a review process. Are we doing all we can for that population of students? So, forty hours? No.
I think, I think I would have this part of the curriculum committee, subcommittee, I'll recommend us go to the curriculum committee and have them take this for action. Yeah. We'll do that, if you don't mind. Just, one of the things that the pupil service department has, has done at length over the last year, eighteen months, we've been under state review. So, we are in the process of spending a lot of time and effort to make sure that we have a quality program that meets all the state requirements because of a lawsuit that came about. So, there's a couple things that could come out of this in the next, next six months that, or less.
We should just start by it's not a local lawsuit.
It's correct, correct. I'm sorry, this is bigger than us. Thank you, Kate. Thank you. It's bigger than, this, this case is bigger than us. This case is...
What have you done?
This case is bigger than us, but it's trickled down to the local level. So, so we have been under this audit and our, our program is, is self-scrutiny first. The state is involved pretty much at this point in every piece that we do with transitions, with curriculum, with mental health and counseling and staffing to make sure that we're, we're highly qualified throughout. So, as we move through this process, we might find next year that we don't even have a program because we can't meet the standard of expertise. So, we'll be at the table with another conversation of how we're going to, you know, place our students when needed at an alternative place. So, this time, you know, the pupil services department, you know, is putting together, you know, continues to work hard to help us maintain our current, our current place where we are. So, we have information and I, and I do feel this, that, that we can, we can get that information. I, I just always wanted, I, I say to board this, I say this to you, we can get you anything that you want, but it's going to take time. And I want it to be for, for the good of the organization that we spend that time because when the time starts with me and trickles down to Dr. Harney and goes to directors and goes through our, our principals, then it, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of time and a lot of people are affected. So, you know, I think, I think that I appreciate Mrs. Custer taking this to your committee and we can, we can summarize some things for you there and we'll invite you to, to come when that time comes. So, thank you. Okay.
Last question. I can't think of the name of the program, Mr. Voorhees. The tutoring program that we do with this, the, I think it's just elementary from December to March, this came up a couple months ago in one of our monthly things and I just kept forgetting to, to ask about it. Why is that tutoring program such a short period of time? It seems to me if, I mean, unless the students are just reaching their goals and then that's it, but we put a lot of focus on, you know, after school, I shouldn't say a lot, but we put focus on after-school programs and clubs and some academic, some not. But this program is just that short period of time. Why not have it more, you know, extended for students that aren't meeting whatever, you know, goals they have? And kind of a side question to that, if we have a student in the current, you know, December to March program, that, that seems appropriate, but the student, the parents refusing, are they allowed to attend other clubs such as games club instead of that?
So, there are a number of questions in there. I'll do my best to, to remember all of them. The program Mr. Parker's referring to occurs over at lower, so it's for students in grades three, four, and five. It's kind of titled our after-school tutoring program, and it's really meant as additional learning time for kids who need additional support with both math and reading. This year's program really focuses on one of the days, it's offered twice during the week on Mondays and Wednesdays. And we choose those days so not to interfere with other things because number one, kids want to be involved in other things, and number two, a lot of our staff are involved in some of those other clubs as well. So, we manage that. In terms of why not more, number one, there's a cost to that. Number two, we have to monitor what we, what we put on our students. So, all day long, they're with us, they're provided a lot of regular instruction throughout the day. They're also provided a lot of intervention if needed throughout the day and/or enrichment. We're all, for some students, we're already extending that day beyond a certain time and multiple days throughout that week. We do believe we have a good program. Our teachers work really hard in that program to provide small group instruction so that they can really target skills that students need. They use direct information that they get from the math assessments. They talk directly with their classroom teachers. So, there's really close communication in terms of what do the students need? How do we maximize that time in terms of the instruction that they need? And how do we prepare them, not just for a state test, but for life? What questions did I miss, Mr. Parker?
I think you, I think you covered the questions. Well, except during that short period of time, December to March, if a student is, but if a student, it's a student that you, whoever wants in that program and they, they are the parents, they know, are they allowed to be in non-academic clubs after school such as games?
They are. We have, we've had conversations with parents and/or families about that. Some parents are invited, or some students are invited, their parents or families are invited to have the students attend. Some parents choose not to do that. When that occurs, we determine a different pathway in order to make sure that the student gets what they need. So, again, that might occur during the school day, could occur during tier time, there's any number of conversations that could occur for that.
Thank you. I think my opinion on the issue came out of my questions, so thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? No questions from you? No questions? No question?
No, he doesn't.
No, he doesn't. Just a minute, are you powering my computer? Just, just real, real briefly, I just, just would like, just one thing I wanted to share with the board on Monday. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to take part in a press conference with thirty other superintendents from the Philadelphia Lancaster, Berks, Bucks, and Chester County, as well as Montgomery County at Whitehall Elementary. And it was an opportunity for us as, as a group to really stand together, was Leaders for Education Accountability and Reform Network. And our plea really is to charter school reform, you know, package, especially for this, the cyber charter. And we've talked about this at the board level at that expense and, you know, the, the governor has, has, you know, made, made it a priority. We really don't know what type of priority it is, but, you know, we're educating our charter, our charter school, our cyber kids through our BVA program between five and six thousand dollars. That money, when it goes out to an independent charter school, it's around fourteen thousand. Also, when that student is labeled a special ed student, that price goes up to around thirty thousand dollars. We, on the cyber school level of BVA, we're, we're educating our students between seven, eight, and nine thousand dollars. So, for us, for us, we were a minor player in it, but I felt my colleagues who are major players needed my support. You know, we spent a little over two million. We spend as less as one point one, I think, in the time. It varies from year to year. But some of the school districts that I, I partnered with yesterday spent over ten million dollars in, in the cyber charter piece. And I think that, you know, the, the law has been in the books for over twenty years. And I think what school districts and the superintendents are really just asking for is a review. We're not really putting a, a number on what it has to be cut to, but I think, you know, in fairness, you know, in fairness to all the districts and us, you know, if we could save half of two million, you know, if we could cut our, our cyber bill in half, you know, that, that would be two and a half percent of our, of our yearly budget. So, I supported my colleagues, you know, from Westchester and Avon Grove, Narsetown, Ben Salem, and again, those are schools that butt up against the city a lot of times and there's a lot of back and forth. So, I just wanted to, to let you know that I, I did support that, that group and I think that anytime I had the opportunity to represent a district and at the same time be part of something that could save us money in the long run, that it's worth our while. So, I just wanted to let you know that I attended that yesterday and, you know, we'll, we'll find out, we'll see what happens moving forward. So, thank you.
I should go question in regards to that. When the districts get together and they meet each other for products like this, like for cyber charter reform, do they ever bring up, and I understand we're always saying about saving money and such, but do they ever bring up as in that the property taxes and such that we're using our public money, but there's no representation of the public on any of those boards? So, that's where they can go from, we're seven, eight, nine, and they're fourteen, twenty-four, whereas if, maybe if we had some representation, we could actually, it would still help the students, but we would then be able to find ways to fine-tune that money because it's the taxpayers' money. They should have some type of representation, I would think.
And the answer to your question is yes. That was brought, that was brought up yesterday. And I think the great example, the great example was the Narsetown superintendent said, I have five hundred students that go to a cyber school, a cyber charter or a charter school, and my school board, we have no say in what goes on. So, that would be a piece of that, that, that as well, that if districts did have more say in that, that would be, that would be helpful. Correct. Yep, brought up.
Cyber charter has been debated and is debating, is being debated in the legislature. The committee that I'm on, the legislative committee, is looking into that. However, a practical reality is with the recent announcements of the retirements in the, in the legislature and the general assembly, I think everything that had been planned up till now is kind of, kind of goes in the trash can and kind of goes, has to be reassessed in light of who the new speaker's going to be and so on. So, I'm, practical politics says that a lot of the stuff that I sent to you, to the board of a meeting in January is now obsolete or is going to be sitting on the shelf until things get sorted out.
I was hoping we were part of that press con- conference, so thank you for attending and letting us know.
As a point of clarification, you talked about our, our spending at Potsgrove is about two million dollars. Well, I think what you, what you were saying was that we spend out, we're, we're paying out the two million dollars to students who go out of the district to cyber charter schools, not part of BVA.
Correct.
So, we're paying that higher amount. If a student stays within Potsgrove and goes to the BVA school, we're paying that lower rate of three thousand dollars a year.
A little bit more.
I'm sorry. Yeah, that, that lower amount, you know, for, for regular education or for the, the special education as opposed to the higher number, which is based on average student cost per, per district, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's, that's what the two million dollars is. So, that, that was the cost that we were talking about. I just wanted to clarify the difference there. You know, we're happy to pay for our students to go to our BVA distance. I, I will tell you that my own son attended that first semester. It worked out very well for him. It was, it suited his needs to, to go to that part-time for the BVA and it was, it was a wonderful experience. It was a great opportunity and I have nothing but good things to say about it. So, you know, one of the things that's great about Potsgrove, there's many, 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 many things great about Potsgrove, is that you get out of it what you put into it. You look at what do you need? What, what can be done? What works for you? How do you want this experience to work for you? And if you can express, here's what I need, here's what, you know, here's what I bring to the table, how can you help me? The staff will work with you, the administration will work with you, and they will help you and they will meet you and they will make a program that works. You get out of it what you put into it. If you're not willing to work, if you're not willing to try, if you're not willing to talk, okay, you're going to get less than you could. It's really that simple. Ninety-five percent of life is showing up. Show up and succeed. Okay? That's simple. And that's all I have to say about that. But I will say one other thing. At our last board meeting, we did, in one of our very big roundup motions, extend a contract. We extended a contract for one year. A lot of times, I don't make special, special mention of those things. I don't make a lot of special mentions. We just kind of do things. One of my predecessors, Phil Keo, was always very good about taking time out and doing special mentions of folks, and he was always very good with the, the appropriate words at the appropriate time. I'm not so great at that. I, I kind of, when people meet expectations, I just kind of let it go at that and I don't, I don't always take the special time out. So, I would at this time like to make amends for that oversight from last week and say that I'm very happy that we were able to make an agreement with Dr. Shirk to extend his contract for another year and he'll be with us through 2021. And we're very happy that the board and Dr. Shirk were able to make that agreement. And so, although it was passed last time and we announced it last time, it wasn't announced properly, he had to say it himself and that's on me. So, I just wanted to make that publicly as part of the board. So, that's, that's it for new business. And that brings us to public comment. So, I'll give everybody a chance. Hearing none, motion to adjourn to be in order. All those in favor? Okay.
Thanks, Bob.